Sorry, I didn't pass by on my phone. This is already in the next place.
No, please, like it's not. It's just not connected to our internet.
So I'm looking.
See, it's so cool.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a minute late getting started. Welcome, everybody, tonight for tonight's council meeting. And if you wouldn't mind, I would like to ask Doug Page to offer our invocation and stand with me for the... I mean, Doug Page. I think I said pledge.
Heavenly Father God, because of you, Lord, we just thank you for the many blessings you bestowed on us, God, that we don't deserve. God, we just thank you for your grace. We ask that you be with your council tonight, our council. God will lift them up to you, your decisions, their decisions be yours, your will be done. And God just bless the people out here tonight and keep them safe as they drop off. In your son's precious name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is safe, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you haven't silenced your phones, please do that now. And let's get started with the agenda. I'm not aware of any community events that are coming up right away. Are you?
Yes, we have the 13th Annual Father Daughter Dance at the Community Center on February 15.
Okay. Anything else from council members? All right. Let's move on to the city manager's report.
Work is progressing on the new substation transformer. The construction contractor returned to work last Monday, laying underground conduit for wiring connections and preparing to put up structures, the whole equipment overhead. Brothers came on the 13th and were finished with their work by the end of the week. They brought a transformer mounted on wheels to operate the electric system while safely making connections for the new transformer. The short outage that we had that week was when we transferred power to their transformer. It was caused by some safety features in our system that did not completely recognize or like the wired transformer's power. There should be no downtime if the work is done. It was just a freak thing and they disconnected three wires and then it stopped the problem. The construction and transformer crews were back in the bitter cold last week. The construction crew is putting conduit in the ground for wiring and running the ground grid through the new transformer area. The transformer crew is finishing assembling the transformer and rebuilding some of the items on the transformer, making it safer than when it was new. It is probably about a month or longer before we can activate the new transformer. And it, but it's looking and moving pretty well out there. The sewer line project is waiting for bids on the next phase, which will occur on Caulfield, Strong, Roach, and Hudson Street and the alley behind Holm Street. We're also waiting on the city attorney to finish negotiating the easement for the Glen Hills Lift Station, so both projects are basically on hold. Even though Nelson Street, the Nelson Street project is substantially complete, several items must be taken care of before we release the contractor. We're going to schedule approval for final payment. We were going to schedule approval for final payment for this meeting, but everything has not been completed. And until I am sure that all the subcontractors have been paid, I will not release any more funds to them. Sounds as though, and I hadn't had any official notification, notification that they've paid most of the subs, at least some of them, especially the local subs. So that's moving along now and we'll probably finalize that at the next meeting. The new budgeted park equipment has been installed at Pelham Park Play Area. Last week, the soft pad was blown in around the latest equipment. Please take time to visit the park and look at the new fun climbing equipment. And there's some climbing equipment for older kids there, too, which makes that really good. The kids are really enjoying it and it's new and it's safer for them. So we, and we're going to try to utilize some of the older equipment in some of the other parks with just pieces of it and stuff that we can use in, like the South Side Park. As you might know, we're beginning to see development north town along Highway 81. I am applying for a grant to replace the 1930s water line that goes to the Old Buoy Lake. The line is so old that we're having problems with volume and pressure, especially if there's a leak on the line. When there is a leak, most customers along that line lose water and pressure. The line is in our CCN permit area, so if somebody builds a home or business close to our line, TCEQ rules require us to serve them. The USDA Rural Development Funds, the grant and loan program, so I'll be letting y'all know more about this later, but it, hopefully, it'll be 100% grant. We finally heard from TCEQ about the new raw water pump at the lake. They said that we're still in violation, but they would give us a little extra time to arrange financing to install the new pump. As soon as the council gives approval to the new water rates, we will proceed. We may not have to proceed. We're doing a little battle in the background with TCEQ and I'm trying to stop. Some of the numbers that they give us are somewhat skewed and we're battling over the number of meters and the capacity of pumps and that thing. So that just happened today and so I really don't know that much about it, but hopefully, we might be able to skip that. The downtown revitalization grant project is on hold as we're waiting for the TDA to review the plans. As soon as we get their approval, we will bid that project. Any questions?
So this is on the agenda, so as far as the waters, a little safe discussion for that. If you have any questions, let's do that during that time. Any other questions for his report?
How long on the downtown revitalization grant? I mean, how long does that review take or does it just kind of up in the air?
Well, the tech department, bad culture is kind of like the federal government. About half of them or more work from home and they're fixing to have to go back to work. And that slows things down immensely. So I really don't know. They just drag their feet.
All right. Let's go ahead and do the consent agenda items. Your minutes from the last meeting in December and the write-offs for this month are in your packet. So if you've had a chance to look over them, I would entertain a motion to accept the items as presented.
So moved.
Donna and then Stephanie?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ashley?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
And Walker?
Aye.
All right, from this point, we're going to skip over the old business and get some of these people that really don't want to listen to all this out of the room. First thing we're going to do is ask to approve an appointment of Randy West to the expired term, unexpired term of Charles Tyson on the Bowie Economic Development Corporation. I don't, do you guys need to come to say anything?
If you have any questions, we're happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, let's go, let's go to the mic. Tell them what's going on.
Sure. First off, thank y'all. So in case you don't know me, I'm Janice Crowley with the Economic Development Corporation. And Mr. Tyson has served on the board and he will be retiring. And so upon his retirement, he wishes to resign from the board as a voting member. Randy West has been a voting member in the past. He also retired in '20 whenever he retired from the Atmos Energy. But he still serves on the board as a, our utility advisor. And so as y'all know, that our board is made up of individuals that serve a purpose and bringing their knowledge and an expertise that they actually do in certain areas. So until we can find, or we have an applicant that will fulfill the financial banking part of our applicant, of our board members, then the board would like to appoint Randy to fulfill that because he is very aware of the financials and the expenditure projects that we have going.
How long's left on the term?
It will expire in September of '26.
Any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion to appoint, reappoint, appoint, I guess, appoint Randy to the unexpired term of Charles Tyson.
So moved.
Second.
Shaw? Ashley? Sprouls?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ashley?
Aye.
I would like to say congratulations to Mr. West for receiving a well-deserved award last night at the Chamber Banquet. He received the Francis Bright Citizen of the Year Award in conjunction with Terry Gunner. And this is just another step that proves how much you are committed to our community and I appreciate you taking this on. Thank you. Once again, I'd like to offer you the opportunity to exit at the facilities if you would like to. I know you don't want to sit through our business any more than we want to have to sit through yours, so you're welcome to leave if you want to.
Bye, Dave.
We're going to take another item out of order, which will also be Resolution 2025-02. Resolution of the City of Bowie authorizing the filling, filing of a grant application with the Nortex Regional Planning Commission for a regional solid waste grant program, authorizing Burke Cunningham, city manager, to act on behalf of the City of Bowie in all matters related to the application and pledging that if the grant is received, City of Bowie will comply with the grant requirements of Nortex Regional Planning Commission of Texas, the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality in the state of Texas. And Kirk Higgins has a presentation for us, a short presentation. So if somebody would grab those lights behind the door and dim them a little bit? That's perfect.
Yeah. Good evening. As the mayor said, I'm just here requesting a resolution to support our grant request, which will actually be, the presentation will be tomorrow morning at Nortex and then will be the scoring and ranking tomorrow afternoon. The City of Bowie is asking for a grant and it's a 100% grant with no local pay, so won't be anything out of our pocket, for a 18-foot dump trailer for use by the city electric department to help remove vegetation along the power lines for wildland mitigation for fire prevention. And it would also be available, well, we'll get to that. There is $70,000 available total funding for this. We're asking for $25,000. As you can see, again, grant request, $25,000. The picture before that was the bright yellow trailer. That's the most photogenic one I could find online. I don't know that it will be that color when it arrives. But it will be for $25,000 for the trailer be available for use by the electric department and public works and the Parks and Rec Department if needed for vegetation or trash removal and that kind of thing. The advantage is the trailer has normally, we would be using a dump truck to move the vegetation and those, the trash and that kind of stuff. Well, a dump truck requires a commercial driver's license, which we don't necessarily always have a CDL licensed driver available to do that. And the fuel economy on a dump truck is nowhere near as good as it is in a pickup truck pulling the trailer. So that's why we went with a trailer instead of trying to do a bigger truck. That's pretty much it.
Any questions for Kirk? All right, well, then I will entertain a motion to accept Resolution 2025-02.
So moved.
Post, you have a second?
Second.
Would you mind flipping those lights back on again for us? Thank you very much. Post?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're going to go to the Section 7, the reappointment of the Boards of Adjustments and Appeals. Item 7. Before we do this, I would like to bring to your attention that recently I realized we have no residential restrictions like we do on our other boards. With the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, I've discussed this with Sandy. We, as a council, can add that to our ordinance. I feel like if somebody's going to be on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, they should at least live in our county. A part of me wants them to be a taxpayer in our city limits, but that's a debate for another day. And in your packet, you'll notice that there is one individual that does not reside in Montague County. Again, we can't make a decision based on that tonight because it's not in our ordinance, but it will be coming back to you for a change or a look at making those changes to our Board of Adjustments and Appeals restrictions. So the first one that we have on the agenda... I'm sorry, when we go out of order, it also goes out of order on my... There we go. That's okay, I got it, I got it. So, I have to write on this one. The re, the first one on the list is Bradley Arp. He's actually a new appointment, not a reappoint. No, is he a reappoint? He's a reappoint that's moved. Yeah. He's a reappoint that's moved. So I would need a motion to reappoint Bradley Arp to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
So moved.
You have a second? Eight, you have a second? I'm going to say that it dies from a lack of a second. And we'll move on to the next one. The next name on the list is Dawn Smith. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with him, so I, I can't, I can't tell you much about him. Is there a motion to appoint Dawn Smith to the board?
So moved.
Ashley? You have a second?
Second.
Post? Shaw?
Yes.
Ashley?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
And Walker?
Aye.
And the third person on the list is Alan Leek. Do you have a motion to appoint Alan Leek to, reappoint Alan Leek to the board?
So moved.
Okay, we're going to go Post and then Ashley this time? Shaw?
I have a statement.
No, that's right, you have to have a statement. Sorry about that. Walker?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Ashley? All right, so that board is done. The next item on the agenda will be for the reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Board. There are restrictions on that one that's already taken care of, so the first reappointment would be Bill Calabretta, who is actually in our audience tonight.
So moved. Make a motion that we approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Sprouls? Shaw?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
And Walker?
Aye.
Thank you. And the second one is for Bradley Summers. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Sprouls? Second?
I have a second.
Walker? Shaw?
Yes.
Ashley?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
And Sprouls?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so now we're going to start at the top. Now, we're going to start at the top of new business. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2025-01. A resolution approving the agreement dated 1/28/25 between the state of Texas and the City of Bowie for the maintenance, control supervision, and regulation of certain state highways and/or portions of state highways in the City of Bowie and providing for an execution of said agreement.
Bert, isn't this the same thing we've always had?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically the same thing. I read through it. Same requirements.
Yeah, I read through it and I couldn't see anything different.
No, there's not.
They're just updating.
Yeah.
They just don't update as often as some of the other ones do.
I make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second it.
Ashley? Post? Walker?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
And Sprouls?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is Chief Guy Green. And go make your way to the podium for the annual racial profiling report. Racial.
Good afternoon or evening. I can make this as long as you want it or as short as you want. It's up to you guys.
Was kind of boring.
Well, that's a good thing that it's boring.
That's a good thing.
I can just hit a few highlights and if y'all want me to do more, I will, if you have questions. We're required by law to present the racial profiling report to the governing body of each police department or law enforcement agency. So for 2024, the Bowie Police Department made 2,143 traffic stops. 1,784 of them were on city streets, 156 on US highways, six on county roads, 157 on state highways, and 40 on private properties. And some of that is citations that are like from animal control. It's not necessarily a traffic stop, but they were a citation. 36 of them, race was known prior to stop. 2,107, they were not. Two individuals were Alaskan Native American Indian. 23 were Asian Pacific Islanders. 71 were black. 1,904 were white. And 143 were Hispanic. 846 were female. 1,297 were male. And, and I can go through, through all this, but everything's pretty proportionate to our population that we have here. I didn't see any concerns, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are we racially profiling?
No.
Perfect.
Good question.
It's all on you to hear.
Good answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, God.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to accept the report as presented.
So moved.
Post, you have a second?
Second.
Sprouls? Post?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
And Shaw?
Aye.
All right. Okay, is Stoney here? No, Stoney's not here. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2021-01. An ordinance of the city, an ordinance of the city council of the city tech, Bowie, Texas, amending chapter 10, traffic control by adding Article 10 dot 200, stop signs established, regulating traffic flow at the intersection of Nelson and North Lamb Streets in Bowie, Texas, establishing stop sign traffic devices, repealing any conflicting clauses, providing for separability clause and establishing an effective date. So most of you have been down Nelson Street and saw the new stop sign. And that was put in because there is a dip there for drainage and it was causing lots of people to call and complain. So the only way to control that was to put a stop sign in so that we could slow the traffic there. Any questions? It also gave us a stop sign coming out of the school area, so that was, that was just a bonus. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the ordinance as presented.
So moved.
Post? Ashley? You ladies are on the ball tonight. Walker?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
Post?
Aye.
And Ashley?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is number six, Mr. Calabretta. You can work your way to the podium. Recommendation for Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the request from Michael Sterba to replats lot, replat lots 19 and 21, block 39, the J.G. Cummins Edition, commonly known as 309 West Pecan, creating lot 19R, block 39, J.G. Cummins Edition.
Sorry, that's me.
All right. City council members and Honorable Mayor, our Planning and Zoning Commission met on January 16 and we had everyone present, so our forum actually was met. And as we looked at what's going on with taking these small lots and making them into one big lot there at 309 West Pecan Street, we decided that that would be a good, a good thing to do and so we approved it and they're passing that approval on to you. I have any questions?
None for me. Anybody else? All right, well, let's entertain a motion to accept it as presented by the Planning and Zoning Board.
So moved.
Shaw, you have a second?
Second.
Post? Ashley?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
And Shaw?
Aye.
Don't forget that Sandy needs these back before you leave. Okay, now let's go back to the front page of the agenda. So I'm going to say, I'd rather hand the floor over to you first to give your update before they have discussion on which way they want to look at this. Number one or number two. So you have an update from TCEQ, is that what you were talking about?
Not, not really. We really don't know anything yet. But it doesn't make any difference what we do with the pump. We might be able to rescind some of the rates later if we don't have to put the pump in. But we're losing money right now in the water department. I mean, so we've got to have a rate increase. Our costs are just out of, you know, it's like grocery prices or anything else. They're just out of control. You know, you have to treat water, you have to buy equipment, you have to fix things when they break. We've got two serious breaks now. One, one is a valve out by Silver Lakes where our line runs into that. There's another one off 1125 in the vicinity of that trailer park that was put in out there, whatever it is. That are both complicated deals. We don't know. The one at Silver Lakes, we know what size line it is, but the one that is, we don't know whether it's a 14 or a 20-inch line, but they're laying right next to each other, so. Anyway, but our costs are just, you know, inflation has killed us. And so we're losing money right now. So if we don't raise rates, we're going to have to get the money somewhere else, either electric rates or sewer rates or something to replace what we're losing in the water. So it's just real simple to, you know, raise the water rates to take care of it. I know nobody wants to do this. I don't want to do it because I'm going to have to pay these water rates, too, and I can't control my wife when it comes to watering the grass. But, but it's just one of those things. I've done my job. I've told the council and the audience, we need this, these increases. If we don't do it, we're going to get in financial trouble. Just simple as that. And I've seen other communities that don't increase rates when they need to and they can't make payments and things of that nature. And some of our bond payments are, come out of the water fund. And I've already looked at first two months of this year, we're still losing money. You know, the council can do what you want to do. My recommendation in, in, in thinking about this over the last month, because it's been a long time since... because it's been a long time since we've had a meeting, that the 16 and 16 probably would be easier on the low-income, low-water-usage customers. Because if we did it with the 7%, 7% with a 7.50 fee, that would hurt the smaller users of water more because they would be paying a higher percentage upfront. So the 16% is probably gonna be better. I've done a Waterworth presentation. If you wanna look at it, I've put it in their package. And I would explain it to you if you'd like to. But they're mostly, both the rate increases are gonna come out this side. It's pretty much a wash. It just depends on what y'all wanna do.
Okay, I think some of the questions are that have come to me are on when you present this rate increase. One of them being, how does it break down to what we need to cover our water expenses and our water bond payments as they may be, compared to adding on the money for a possible increase in the pump project? Because as it's presented, you've included break-even with our water or a little bit of profit and the pump. So how do we see this, how do we see the numbers?
Well, the thing about it is if we don't have to replace that pump, and I tell you this right now, we're eventually gonna have to do it. But if we don't have to replace the pump, we can go ahead and pass both, you know, both years' worth of it tonight. If we see we don't have to, we can rescind one of them and just leave it at 16%. I don't necessarily think we need to do that. Well, I'm not a guest received it later on. But you've got 16 now and then 16 the next year. So, you know, that would do it.
I can tell you, I'm out on raising it, doing both of them today. I don't think that we need to be asking for this much of an increase and guaranteeing that we're going up again next year. And then I'm having the same issues, kinda wrapping my head around this of, what's the actual gonna take to get? So let's take the pump out of it for this, right now, for this second. What's it gonna take to get the water? What do you feel like it's gonna take to get it to revenue?
That's why it's in two steps. 16 and 16, or 7 and 7 with the 7.50. The 7.50 and the 7 will get us out of it, and the 16% will get us out of it.
Get us out of what?
Yeah, I don't see that.
We're losing money. It's a waste of losing money.
We're not losing 32, we're not down 32%. Like, I don't understand the breakdown of, how much is that gonna make us? If we added, if those rates were, if they were that now, what is that gonna bring in?
It'll bring in enough to do the pump in two years.
But we're not sure when you're pumping this moment. We're not talking on the pump, though. I mean, we're still kinda up in the air.
And that, you know, you said, we just do 16% now, fine.
Not necessarily. I still don't know that that's the number that we need. I'm confused on, what is the actual dollar numbers that we need to get the water rates at revenue?
Break-even revenue.
Because essentially, I mean.
What, I've given you what you need. It's 16%.
But your 16% includes the pump project.
No, two 16s include the pump project.
So.
I didn't read that.
I know, I've talked to several business owners in town that's actually been here for a while. And they've all said, if we do this raise, they will leave. That they won't stay here in Bowie.
Okay, well, I don't know. I understand, because people tell us that all the time. I'm not saying that a rate increase to bring us back to the black is not necessary. Which been eight, 2018 was our last rate adjustment. And you don't build the same thing today that you paid for in 2018, nor do we treat water for the same thing that we did in 2018. I'm not saying that we don't need to bring our water rates up to meet that obligation. I just wanna know what the number is, what it's gonna take to bring us up to that obligation. And if the 16% were only passed, if the council were to choose to only pass it for this year and next year, how much of that is gonna go towards bringing us back to the black? And how much of it is gonna go towards the project? Is my concern.
16% is gonna bring us back in the black.
So you're telling me right now we need a 16% increase just to bring us into the black?
And you're saying that's gonna be another 16% coming up?
In the second year.
If we have to do the pump, yes. Because we gotta pay for it. Now, 16%, we get us into black, but another 16 will make the payments on it. If we run out of cash, we're gonna have to borrow money to do it anyway. So you're gonna have to make bond payments.
Are we not making money on the utility as a whole? We're just losing in the water section, correct?
So what we do is we make, we want each department, which until, I will have to say, until Bert got here, we did use it as a whole. But we have really worked diligently to get the water to be its own department, self-sustaining, and the sewer to be its own self-sustaining department. Obviously, the electricity is. So we don't wanna take from the electric and put it into another department.
Again, it's also, it's hard for me to give a 16% increase on a one-time purchase. And that increase is always gonna be there. We know good and well, we're not ever gonna.
You know, there's a.
Give a deduction, you know.
I'm sorry. There's a chart in the back of the first deal I gave you. And it shows what other cities' water rates are. Have y'all looked at that?
Yes.
We're pretty good right now. We're lower than everybody else, but we're losing money.
No, not everybody, but.
But can you compare apples to apples here? Are we the same amount of population? I mean, we only have so many people in Bowie.
That's why I did a broad spectrum. Yes, we're same population, some of them, some of them are not. Some of them are in growth areas. Some feed off of Wichita Falls, which they pay through the nose for the water they buy from Wichita Falls. Mr. Walker, let me give you an example that I think will fit for you. If your cost of roofing shingles goes up, do you go up in your price?
Well, obviously, I have to.
Yeah, well, that's what we're doing here. Same thing. Very simple.
But.
But also roofing shingles aren't something that you have to have per se to live. You know, we're already, we know that our population is mainly older population. Older folks tend to live off fixed incomes. A lot of these folks are already having to decide whether they can eat or go to the doctor or pay their water bill. And, you know, to be honest with you, I can afford it. Am I gonna like it? No. But it's our job to think about the citizens, not just what we want. It's about what they want.
Well, it is also our job, as we swore a duty, to run the city fiscally. So if it costs money to do something, we've gotta find it someplace. I don't like the idea of a rate increase. Normally, I wouldn't speak out ahead of all you guys. But we've gotta see where the number is, that we need to make sure that our water department is self-sustaining.
In dollars, what is that number?
We're, right now, to break even, we're averaging $1,307.64 a month in loss. But that's increasing exponentially as we go. The first two months of this year, this budget year, we've lost $102,000.
Adjust the electric rate.
Huh?
Adjust the electric rate. We're making money on that. Give us the same, what you need to increase the water for it to make money, lower the electric rate the same amount.
We're not making that much on electricity right now. You remember, we had to go up because our costs went up.
But in the last four months, we have written off $16,000 in uncollected money. So there's some of our loss right there.
Well, sure it is. It's happened from day one, and it happens all the time. There's no way to stop it the way we build. The losses. People just don't pay their bills, they move out and they're gone. We turn it over to collection, we do a lot of things. We do skip tracing, all that kinda thing. But if they don't pay, they don't pay. We just lose it. And if you run a business, you understand that's part of the thing in your business. Some customers buy from you and then they don't pay their bills.
So is money budgeted in every year to account for anticipated loss?
Well, the problem is, is we budget about six months in advance of the start of the year. And these problems started late.
So that's a no?
That's a no.
So can I say something real quick? Alright, I just moved back to Bowie two years ago, okay? To run some business and retire here. I have a 21-year-old that run a large detail business over there. And we shut her down. Because it's cheaper to buy water from Walmart to do a detail than what it costs from a city. I don't wanna disrespect anybody. But the issue what happened here, I dealt with this in Wallace County. And Wallace County booming, that's helping the city. And Bowie is coming this way. I bought properties, sold properties, and it's too simple, guys. But we have to keep the money in Montech County. Don't bring no contractors from out of town. Share the money with contractors in Bowie. So instead of a, we'll start a project, we finish the project. Instead of spending $2.2 million on the project, spend what you need to spend. And use the rest of that money to use it on the next project. Start the project and get it done. I listen to everything that's going on. The puddles ain't being repaired, the streets ain't being repaired. My buddies are restoring St. Joe. And the corners were stored downtown Decatur, Bridgeport, South Lake. But look at downtown Bowie. I'm a contractor, if I can help in any way. It's too simple, guys. Too simple. It can be done if you wanna do it. So I got a 21-year-old. He's not out drinking, doing drugs. He's trying to grow here, run a business. Trying to bring something to the community. And you don't find 20-year-olds that doing that kinda stuff. It's too simple, guys, if you wanna do it. So if I can help in any way, I'm right here.
Thank you. Well, while the floor's open, does anybody else have anything to say? Go ahead.
So y'all said.
Would you go, he was loud. Would you go to the podium so we can hear you?
It's for our people that watch online.
Yeah, our people that watch online wanna be able to see it.
Can y'all hear me? You now hear me now. Okay. So I know y'all want the water department to be on its own. And I agree, it should be on its own. But that's like 30 some odd percent. And like you said, man, people are having a hard time eating. And I don't see how that's gonna work. Because like that guy said, you know, businesses are gonna leave. People are gonna leave. They'll have to leave. They can't afford it. Why not just have a 16% increase to pay for the pump? And then keep the utilities the way they are and not separate out the water department if it's not making money, but you're making money on your electric? And then shoot for that, like, a year or so when the pump is paid off? Then it's not 30%, right? So, I mean, it's not what you wanna do, but sometimes you gotta do what you have to do to survive. So throwing that out. I have some other comments about the water, but I don't know if this is the time to do it or not. So.
Thank you.
I'll yield.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hello. My name is Tiffany Bugmaster. I own a business here in Bowie. Is it true that we transfer hundreds of thousands of dollars from the utility fund to the general fund every year?
Absolutely.
So how can you say that we don't make money?
Because it helps cover the general fund.
The money that we transfer comes out of the electric fund.
Okay. It's a little difficult to, well. I would agree with you.
Let me stop you right there, because I've got an explanation for that. If we didn't transfer the money out of the electric fund, we'd have to raise taxes a million, too, every year. That's almost doubling the taxes. So it keeps our taxes down.
Is that a good thing?
Yeah, because it's a user fee. It's, in other words, if you don't use it, you don't have to pay for it.
Here are you punishing now.
No.
You are. Let me ask you this. If I am, we won't say wealthy, if I am a middle-class homeowner in the city of Bowie, and I am paying more than I think I wanna pay for my utilities, what am I gonna do? I'm gonna put in better insulation. I'm going to put in better windows. I'm going to bring my costs down. And I'm gonna bring my building. Who picks up the slack? The people who can't afford it? The people who can't afford to put new windows in? The people who can't afford to insulate? The people who are at the mercy of landlords who don't want to do it?
I don't understand what you're trying to say. I mean, I think the whole counter's thinking that, but I don't understand what you're trying to say. You're, I think this group has argued the point today that we don't even wanna have to do this, but there are times when rate increases have to take place just to cover the cost. I don't, I can't say that we can fix somebody else's expenses by not doing something.
No, I agree with you. But my point is that we're not just covering the costs. We make enough of a profit off the utility fund to transfer money over into the general fund every year. Have for years and years and years and years.
That's how it's designed.
The general fund covers the fire department and the police department and administration, the finance department, the water department, sewer department, and they are basically one and the same, and then the electric department. They operate on their own. But they transfer, the electric utility transfer money into the general fund. Like I said, if we continue services like they are, we have to transfer that money or raise taxes or cut officers, cut firemen, cut fire trucks, cut police cars. You gotta make a decision somewhere. If your income, if your income goes down or your expenses go up, what do you do?
When have y'all ever done a wholehearted, comprehensive look at what y'all are spending money on and seen where you could cut?
I do it constantly.
Because all I've ever seen on budgets is increases.
Unfortunately, there are cost increases every year, but you've not seen a lot of utility increases in the last five years. We have adamantly held, even back as far as '21 in the URE, when the city was hit with the $1.3 million bill. We kept that from you, so you can't say that we increased it there. We have not made a water rate increase since 2018. I defy you to find a local city around us that has not made some kind of small incremental adjustment over those last eight years. You talk about the fact that you can't afford the water. This lady said that the water is, I really shouldn't get on this roll, too high here already. But when you look at the chart that Bert has provided, we're $10 less than Decatur, who is booming. We're going to have to grow, eventually, we're gonna have to pay for things that have to happen.
And if you want to raise the water, raise the water, but give me a decrease on my small business utility bill that is way higher than any other city around us.
I defy you there, too.
We have the lowest electric rates in this area.
I will, I have.
For residentials, we do, for small business, we do not.
They're not that bad, because they're lower than residential.
No, they are not. They are.
What?
Four cents, five cents a kilowatt hour, or higher?
No, I don't think so.
Yes, they are.
We're not here to talk about electricity tonight, we're here to talk about water.
You can't talk about one without talking about the other.
Yes, you can, if they're self-sustaining departments, you certainly can.
They're not. They're all one fund.
They're not tonight, that's what we're talking about.
They're all one fund.
They're not, they're not tonight. The, the, the electric is set up by design in the city to provide general fund transfers, to help pay for things that ad valorem taxes will not cover. Fire and police are, no offense, I'm not trying to get on either one of you guys, but fire and poli- and police are two of the largest departments by an extreme amount. We have to be able to pay for those, so that money has to come from somewhere, it comes from electricity. Nobody wants to have to do this. We're not doing it because we're trying to get to anybody. No, nobody on this counter wants to have to do it, but eventually, we've got to see that the cost does go up, and you can't, anybody in this room can't tell me their cost of living has not gone up since twenty-eighteen.
Well, when you start out at an exorbitantly high number,
Of what?
Then, no, you don't get any increases over the last eight years.
Exorbitant, compare our rates, that's, compare our rates to the different cities around us, how are we absorbing them?
The reason we haven't had a, a rate increase in eight years is because we were so high to begin with, eight years ago.
That is not true. That is not true.
Yes, it is. We were the highest in the United States.
No, ma'am.
We were.
No, ma'am. I disagree, but we're gonna, we're gonna go back to the, the business at hand. Does anybody else have anything they would like to say?
I do.
You, I offered you three minutes.
Okay, if y'all want to give us water rate increases to sustain that, then give us an equal electric decrease of the same amount.
You made that statement.
I want the school taxes to go down.
Yeah.
They actually did.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they did.
I'm surprised.
Your, your exemption went up.
So, you could do that, if y'all need the water to carry itself on paper, give the increase, but give us an equal decrease on the electric rate, which is healthy. How's that not a solution?
Okay, then, then, what, what...
In this matter, it's not a solution.
That, what, what, maybe what we should do then is take whatever we give to the water from the electric and take that out of the transfer into the general fund. So, whatever we move over to water, we take out of the transfer, so then we'll have to see, then we'll have to see, uh, what gets cut from the general fund.
There's a bunch in your general fund you can cut from, you don't have to cut from the police department or the fire department, go down the list, there's a lot.
I'll tell you what, I invite you to look at our budget and bring me back those numbers. I didn't say Tammy, I said you.
Me and Tammy are together, you, you...
I invite, I invite you to bring me back those numbers.
Why are you scared of Tammy?
I'm not scared of Tammy.
'Cause she's a CPA and I'm air stylist?
No, I'm not scared of her at all.
That's cute, Galen, that's cute.
That's interesting that you went down that road. Were, any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
I have a topic that we haven't discussed.
Okay, is it on the water?
Yes, on the water.
On the water rate?
It's leftover from last month that I haven't seen that we, uh, talked about yet.
Is it on the water rate?
podium, yeah, it's on water.
Is it on the water rate?
Yes, yes, water rate.
Okay, it's, as long as it's on the water rate, yes.
Correct, on topic. Uh, am I loud enough, or do I need to walk up there?
Go ahead, go back up there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's not too loud. I don't want to blast your ears. Okay, I watched on YouTube the city council meeting from last month, and I wasn't able to come, and y'all talked about the city rate increase, and then the out-of-towners were gonna pay more, and then you shelved it because you didn't know how much, and I believe, um, maybe, um, county councilman, lady council, councilor, sorry, um, that you were discussing that we sh- the out-of-towners that are on city water should pay more than they're paying now, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, because we're getting free, or basically free, um, when the city is paying out the nose. And I had some comments on that, because...
Wait a minute, I'm not understanding your statement, you're, who's basically getting for free?
The, the people that are not in city limits but are, have to have city water.
They do get, they do have a ri- a higher rate than we have, yes.
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, so nobody's getting anything for free?
Yes, I understand that.
They have a higher base rate.
Correct, yeah, there, it's already a higher rate, I'm not arguing that it's a higher rate, but what I'd like you to consider is that, I live out on eighty-one, I have that old Bowie Lake line with the water pressure that's, you know, hey, surprise, it's gonna be this today, or it's gonna break this, or the hello silt, or whatever. So, I'm not saying that, that, you know, we shouldn't pay more because we're not paying city taxes, or, but what I'm saying is, when you make your increase, and I remember you shelved it to see how much more that we could charge, right? Because ten dollars more didn't seem like enough, so you shelved it to see what the maximum level was, so that you could see what to charge. Please keep in mind that the people that are out of town don't really have the best of line to, and we're paying that premium for lines that are extremely old and, and don't get the best of care, and I understand the city takes priority, I get that, but when you're thinking about charging a premium for that, remember what quality that we have to live with until it's fixed. Is there a way maybe you could keep it at ten dollars more until you get the line fixed, and then, you know, hey, you got a brand-new line, we're gonna jack up your rates, I understand that, that makes sense. But remember, we're not getting very great quality out there, so please keep that in mind, um.
You actually did some research on that and determined that the, the rate increase that we would be allowable to go up wo- would not make a significant amount of difference.
I sent an email out to the council, I didn't, of course, we hadn't had a meeting since then, but we are, uh, limited by law about how much more we can charge outside the city limits, even though, and the only way we can justify i- if, if our costs are higher to run out outside the city limits. That's what our rates have been based on for the last forty years, fifty years, whatever, they always are higher outside the city limit, because our costs are higher out there.
Okay, so it's not gonna change, or it's not gonna go...
There, there is a statute by law that won't, won't allow us to overcharge you exorbitant amounts.
Correct, yes, I just wondered, I know you, you shelved it, but, and you were gonna shelf it to see what it was, and then come back on this meeting and vote on it. And so, I wondered, uh, I wanted to get my comments in there before y'all considered that, just, uh...
It, it didn't make a, it, it, it didn't make a reasonable amount of change, so it wa- it wasn't, we would still like to keep our, our percentages close.
Right on, happy birthday to me, thank you.
Well, I would, while we're talking about that, I would like to talk about, uh, and I understand that the ones out on eighty-one don't get the greatest, greatest of things, but what about the Amen Carter Water Supply?
What about it?
Well, on the rate increases you're suggesting, theirs would go up from one ninety-five a thousand, where we've been paying, what, four something?
Well, that's a wholesale rate, they turn around and charge their customers more. We sell them bulk water at that price, and I can't remember what the volume is, but I mean, it's like a million and a half gallons a month.
Oh, so they're getting charged more than that?
Yes.
The, the inline customer is receiving a much higher cost than this, this is the wholesale water rate that they get. Amen Carter Water Supply is a wholesale customer. We don't bill the individual users.
It's like the communities that buy water from Wichita Falls. Wichita Falls sells them bulk water, and then they turn around and charge more and, and make money off of that. That's why Indiana and those small towns.
So, did they pay for some of the lines and things that needs to be fixed, like I noticed we went out there to do something? Didn't you just send people out there to work?
We don't even set their meters.
Yeah, we, well, uh, yeah, we've, we work, we don't work on their lines, we work on our pipeline going out there.
Okay, that's what was repaired this week?
Not yet, no, because the, the...
Okay, I just was talking about the notice we got on our, on our phones or something.
Okay, that had to do with...
That was Silver Lakes, that was Silver Lakes.
That had to do with Silver Lakes and that valve problem.
So, we sell water to Silver Lakes?
We, yeah, but they, they are end customers, they are city of Bowie customers that live outside the city limit, they pay more for the water out there.
So, they're some of the ones that, that's on this outside the city limit then.
Yes. But Amen Carter, we just sell to the district, and then they resell it to their customers.
Well, jeez, they're closer than Silver Lakes. Right?
I, I don't, I don't understand the question.
Well, I mean, I just don't know why they're a separate...
Well, I don't know, that's an, an old system, how old is that system?
Yes, I know, I remember when it went in.
I was mayor years ago.
I do, I remember, I was there.
When it happened, and the people around Amen Carter Lake formed a private corporation, a nonprofit corporation, they borrowed money from the USDA and put in water lines out there, and we cut a deal with them to sell them water. We used an old line that we, excuse me, that was a raw water line, uh, coming in, we cleaned it and started treating, sending treated water out to Amen Carter, but we sell it to them as, uh, they are a wholesale customer of the city of Bowie.
Okay, well, see, I didn't understand that.
Okay.
I understand your question earlier now, Brett.
Let me, let me just kind of finish this up. It doesn't make me any difference, one way or the other, yeah, it does, too, that's a wrong statement. I, I've done what y'all pay me to do. We're losing money in water, I've given you the numbers that we need to increase, it's up to y'all to make the decision. I've done my job. If y'all don't take my advice, you're wasting your money paying me. Period.
So, council, uh, we have two ordinances to look at. I'm gonna read them both, so you know what's coming. Ordinance twenty-four ten, twenty twenty-four ten, and ordinance amending appendix C fee schedule, water rates twenty-eighteen, and the code of ordinance of the city of Bowie increasing water rates, and in that, and adding a two-year schedule, providing a savings clause and severability clause and an effective date. The second ordinance would be twenty twenty-four dash eleven, and ordinance amending appendix, appendix C fee schedule, water rates of twenty-eighteen, the code of ordinance of city of Bowie, increasing water rates and adding a two-year schedule, providing a savings clause and severability clause and an effective date. Both of those are in your, in your packet, as the first one is sixteen, the first year is sixteen, the second, and the other one is a seven percent increase with a seven-dollar and fifty cent monthly charge that would sunset. And that also goes on for two years. Although in the second year, the seven fifty wouldn't, wouldn't be added. I mean, it would be added, but it would stay the same, it would stay the same.
That would stay in until twenty thirty.
Till twenty thirty.
Till twenty thirty. So, um, the first one is a thirty-two percent over two years, the second one is fourteen percent, not including the seven fifty, but the seven fifty would sunset in twenty thirty. So, I'm gonna call, uh, for a motion for ordinance twenty-four ten, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four ten, an ordinance of sixteen percent increase for over two years. No motion? Okay, it dies from a lack of emotion, of emotion, of emotion, a motion? All right, the second one is for, uh, twenty twenty-four dash eleven, it is also, it, this ordinance is the flat seven fifty charge, which would sunset in twenty thirty, but a rate increase the first year of seven percent and a rate increase the second year of seven percent. So, I'll entertain a motion to accept this ordinance.
I feel like the problem is that now we're, we're talking about this pump, and, and then even the sunset part of that was kind of due to funding of that pump, and I'm, I'm still just struggling with these numbers on what the correct rate needs to be.
I've told you what it needs to be.
But now we're introducing other factors, and then I'm getting conflicting things, we're talking fifteen hundred dollars a month that we're losing, and you just said now there's a hundred thousand?
Yeah, we've lost, the first two months this year, uh, we've lost a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand.
How does that come up with just four months ago that it was fifteen hundred? I mean, what, what has...
That was the average over the last budget year.
Right.
Those red numbers that he gave you was just for this twenty-four.
I get that, okay, so we're making purchases, though. Does that mean that when we don't make these purchases, what are they gonna be?
They're budgeted and they're made. You do what you want to do. You know, we faced the same, same thing when we built Amen Carter Expansion, we spelt, just faced the same thing when we built the water plant and the sewer plant. Every time we do, get ready to do a major project, we have to face this thing, and it just whether you have the intestinal fortitude to do it or not. If you don't do it, and we lose, then we start missing bond payment, you, you see what happens?
I understand that, I just, I think...
You run out of money.
Could be other alternatives to this.
No, I don't think there is.
Well, for me tonight, then, I, I, I can't pass this as it is.
Okay, well, we don't even have a motion on the board. Again, I'm gonna call for a motion on twenty twenty-four dash eleven. All right, it dies from a lack of a motion. Now, that's not to say that if, um, that this will probably come back, especially if we hear from TCEQ, um, I'm sure Bert will be looking at something to try and make us in the black, and anything he brings, you will seek.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comments from the public?
When does TCEQ start punishing us when I have an F?
We've not been given that information yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'll call the meeting tonight at seven oh five.